Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, February 1st, 2022 Board of Selectmen meeting. We're calling the meeting to order at 6:15 to enter into executive session. We'll return out here at 7:00 p.m., but in order to do that, I'll just read a motion. We'll go offline and then we'll be back. Motion to enter into executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for contract negotiations with non-union personnel, the fire chief contract, for union negotiations and strategy discussion regarding contracts for the Local 379, MCOPF, sorry, AFL-CIO, Local 2522 FPFA, United Steelworkers A and B, Local 1702 AFSCME DPW, and Boyd &amp; Library Employee Association to vote on and approve or not release executive session minutes from October 12th and October 26th, 2020-21, and then to reconvene in open session.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
You need to do.
Mark, yes.
Leah, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
All right, great. We'll see everyone at 7:00 p.m. Thank you. All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome back to the February 1st Board of Selectmen's meeting. Sorry, we're running a few minutes late to keep you all waiting, try to get us back on track. So we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Seth, if you can lead us in the pledge.
Sure. Pledge allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America, a true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Do we have anyone here for citizens input or any comments ahead of time or anything? No? Okay. All right, so with that, we'll move right into the Red Robin action. If I could have the folks here for Red Robin just come up. We're going to ask you to just, each of you, to sit right at a microphone, please, and just make sure you keep it close.
No.
Oh, yes, thank you. All right, great. So if you can just introduce yourselves and tell us a little bit about the change of manager application that you have in front of us this evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Andrew Upton for the licensee. With me is Scott McCollum, the proposed manager of record. Scott's been at Red Robin for a couple of months now, having taken over from the previous manager. He's got a lot of experience in restaurants. He's got a lot of experience with the sale and service of alcohol and with the supervision of the sale and service of alcohol. He's tips trained. He's working there full-time, which is, I would guess, 50 hours or more per week.
Yeah, about 55.
He's vigorously checking IDs and tells me that he has already confiscated a number of fakes.
Okay.
And with that, he's looking forward to working with Red Robin and the town and the board, and we're glad to answer any questions.
All right, great. So we have your application here. If you can tell us a little bit about your background, we have all the employment history that's here, particularly, you know, anything that you've done before supervising liquor sales.
Yeah, so I recently just moved back from San Diego. So I ran a store called Witch Witch. It's a franchise sandwich shop. So we served about three different beers. Chipotle is really the one where I started to get into the liquor. So we sold margaritas quite frequently. I wasn't the one that was licensed, I was the district manager, but I was in charge of the ordering, supplying, training everyone to check IDs, et cetera. So those are my two backgrounds right now.
Okay, great. I guess we don't usually see Chipotle in Witch Witch and think of liquor sales, so it's good to clarify.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
And to the one in Coronado.
Have you? Yeah, that was in my district, so.
Okay.
Did you have a margarita?
No, I didn't even notice that they sold alcohol, to tell you the truth.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I guess the only thing, as we looked at your application, that came to my mind, I can't speak for everyone, but just, you know, the length of your commute to work and, you know, being there for the amount of hours, so.
Yeah.
Can you just address that a little bit?
Yeah, so in March, I'm actually moving to Nashville, which is closer.
Okay.
I was originally hired as the Salem manager in New Hampshire, but this opportunity came up with Patriots Place.
Okay.
So for my career, I had to take the jump.
Okay.
The commute's not too terrible, but I am going to relocate closer, so it's not an hour, 15, hour, 20. But yeah, so they paid me, so they're making wages and stuff, so that I'm able to have gas money as well, so.
Okay.
So it kind of pays for itself.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, actually, when I looked too, I thought the same thing.
Yeah.
He's going to treat all, wait down from there.
Trust me, I worked it out in my contract.
You just have this store, you don't have.
I just have this store.
The Salem money in this one, okay.
Yeah.
And yeah, same thing, I was thinking like, oh my goodness, but, you know, so obviously, I work in the service field, and I know it's just hard to get help, places are, you know, so, you know, if they have somebody.
Yeah, I got lucky.
And I was glad to hear, because honestly, as I looked at your employment history, I was like, I don't see alcohol, don't see alcohol, don't see alcohol, you know, obviously not knowing what Witch Witch was exactly.
Yep.
And, yeah, Chipotle's around here, don't serve alcohol.
Yeah.
So, yeah, no, I guess the only thing, I mean, I don't think I would have been against you becoming the manager, because, you know, there was nothing there, but I was, I did have a little concern about the alcohol.
Yeah.
And I don't even feel like Red Robin isn't a, like, it's not like a big, huge, walking, crazy.
Yeah.
Kids come in and hang out, you know, place, so.
Yeah, it's more such as the Patriots games, which is the big thing.
So, no, I mean, I guess the only thing I would, I would tell you is I feel like Foxborough is, you know, diligent on people being on their toes with alcohol, and, you know, welcome you and wish you well there.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it. Look forward to working with you guys.
You must have loved coming from San Diego to 24 inches of snow the other day.
You know, I had a great six years out there, but gas prices a little too high, so it's time to come back.
But, well, just slipped my mind, the program.
Tom, you know Tom down at Tevelino?
Yeah, and I did reach out to him, too.
Okay, thank you.
We can't let anyone through without asking them that.
Got you, I got you.
Fox scares.
Yep, absolutely.
That was the only thing, wanted to make sure you knew about Fox scares.
So I sent them an email, so hopefully me and him will touch base.
All right, great. He's a great guy. All right, so with that, I think we're ready for a motion. Thank you for coming in in person this evening.
Thank you, guys, nice to meet you.
You too.
Motion to approve a change of manager for Red Robin International Incorporated, doing business as Red Robin, America's gourmet burgers and spirits, from John Massaro to Scott McCollum.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Welcome.
All right, welcome to town, thank you.
Look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much.
All right, next up, we have the billboard zoning discussion, and I see Barney and Lorraine there. Can you guys hear us? Give us a little wave if you can hear us. Make sure we can hear you. Is anyone, Frank, are you coming up for this one or anyone else?
Yes.
Just if I can ask you gentlemen to, just make sure you stay on top of that microphone, please. All right, so we'll turn it over to this team, if you don't mind just introducing yourself, you know, when you speak or at the start.
Sure.
Leah, you want me to start?
Yeah, and Barney, I don't know if you can see here, but you do have the full board that's here in the room as well, just so you know.
Okay, thank you. So several months ago, I was contacted initially by Attorney Burr and subsequently by Frank Spillane to determine if the town might be inclined to allow billboards along Interstate 95. And both Mr. Burr and Mr. Spillane represent respective clients who are interested in doing so. So subsequent to that, those inquiries, the Board of Appeals met with Frank and with Bob, and the board authorized me to work on a zoning, not a zoning bylaw, a signed bylaw amendment that would allow billboards along the interstate. We met with Mr. Burr and Mr. Spillane again in January to review the draft bylaw amendment that I had prepared with Lorraine's assistance, and that draft bylaw amendment does have, incorporates comments from both Mr. Burr and Mr. Spillane, so I assume that it is amenable to both of them. And what the board authorized me to do at that point in time was to advise the Board of Selectmen that the position of the zoning board is that we would recommend that the Board of Selectmen consider putting this signed bylaw amendment on the warrant for town meeting in May. I assume that you have a copy of what I prepared, of the draft bylaw amendment?
We do.
Okay. Essentially, what it would allow would be billboards, whether static or electronic, along properties, on properties that are in the Interstate 95 corridor and the Interstate 495 corridor, provided that the billboards are placed within properties that are in the limited industrial district. So accordingly, it would not be on any residential property, the property would have to be within the limited industrial district, and also, the billboard would need to be a certain specified distance from the nearest residential unit. Now, I had initially left that blank, I know in discussions with Mr. Burr and discussions with Mr. Spillane, it was suggested that 300 feet might be, might be appropriate, but I had initially left that blank for discussion. And with that, I'll either turn it over to Lorraine, Frank, or Bob, or be happy to answer any questions.
And just to set the stage, this would be a Board of Selectmen sponsored article, or is that correct?
That's correct.
So this would be sponsored by us, even though they're doing the legwork on it, just as we kind of set the stage there.
That's correct.
Just as an introduction, Attorney Frank Spillane here. I represent Arthur Rounds and the Rounds family. With me is Attorney Robert Burr, who's representing American Outdoor Advertising. We've been working together and trying to attempt to see if the town would be amenable to allow a billboard on the Rounds' property at 1 Springbrook Road, which is off of each, East Belcher Road, dump roads, a lot of us know about it. So as Mr. Overett indicated, we spoke with them about that issue. When I have clients like this, what I always recommend is working with the town and seeing if the town is amenable, and then working with the language, so that if we had done a citizen's petition, citizen's petition would have been just put in as written in the warrant, I always think it's better to work with the town to see if they can get comfortable with language, even if they're not in favor of it, but if it passes, they'd be at least comfortable with that language. We approached the Board of Appeals with regard to that, they were amenable to working with, working out the language, and the language is what you've received. As Barney indicated, one of the questions was the distance to residential units. Also, some of the discussions was whether it should be through a residential unit or residential zone or something like that. Eventually, it was decided on residential unit, and 300 feet was what we determined would be useful for the town. We do have a citizen's petition all written up, as you've received with the 300 feet in there, but we'd be much more open to working with the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Appeals in order to get it on the warrant, so that there's a little bit more flexibility if all parties decide that maybe the language can be changed in advance of the warrant being finalized. And again, we went through the procedure with the Board of Appeals, they agreed with the recommendation and recommending to put it on the warrant for this annual town meeting. I'll join you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Spillane. Yes, as was said, I originally reached out to, actually, Mr. Keegan, who I'm doing for a number of years. I was a former selectman in the town of Canton for 13 years and have represented American Outdoor Advertising on a number of billboards further north on I-95, and was interested in representing American Outdoor Advertising along with Mr. Rounds here in Foxborough. And I was pleased when I first spoke with Mr. Overett that this is one of the best billboard bylaws that I've seen in the state. Many towns are just taking their existing signed bylaws, their zoning bylaws, and then offering all sorts of variances, which really kind of move away from the intention of the sign. I do agree that having the Board of Selectmen, having served on one myself, I always think there's a better presentation to the town if it can be a Board of Selectmen sponsored article, if it's in the overall best interest of the town, as opposed to a citizen article that may appear more self-serving. I'm also pleased that the billboards here in Foxborough have been such a tremendous success. I've been able to negotiate good mitigation programs for the town of Canton, for example, and would expect to do the same thing here in Foxborough as well, too. I do think the 300 feet makes the most sense, provides the most flexibility, and a lot has been said, and I, we'd like to see the Board of Selectmen sponsor this article at your town meeting. Thank you.
Any comments from Lorraine? I think she's the only one having heard from her. Did you cover for both of you guys?
Yes, Leah, I just wanted to mention that we'd also had some discussions with Bill about potential benefits to the town related to looking at citing a sign like that on DPW property, so there could also be, in addition to this location, an opportunity for even more significant benefit to the town. Funds from that could potentially be used for capital projects.
Okay, great. Doc has a question.
Well, I really have three, and I'm not sure, probably Barney or Lorraine. How many miles is 95 and 495 in the Foxborough area?
With light industrial.
With light industrial, do you know? Whoa, someone's prepared.
Just happen to have this.
That's the blue, right?
Pull that out of your pocket, Frank.
It's the blue.
Can you see it?
Yep.
All right. So this is 95 right along here.
Yeah.
Everything in white and this red stripe is all residential. So the only areas that the billboard can go on is this checkered here, here, which is the highway, here, and then down by 495, which would be a tough area. I don't know if any billboard could go in there because of the off and on ramp.
Maybe like All About You, kind of that area.
I'm sorry?
That's like, we're All About You, the.
106.
Yeah, on 106 is where we're talking?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
You know, yes.
Okay. You don't, you don't go to that salon.
Maybe he does, who knows? Can't tell? So this is really going to be the primary areas for it. Now, this is the industrial park, which has the handle of the 40B right there. So again, they got to be a minimum of 300 feet, even though they're in the limited industrial zone, they're going to be a minimum of 300 feet from that, you know, closest residential unit. So it'll be limited what can go over here. This is again, you know, I always know it's Dump Road, Belcher, East Belcher Road, this is where most of it's going to be, and this backland back here is all undeveloped at this point, really. So it's going to be right in this area and possibly right along here. Now, the closest residential unit on the east side of 95 for us, on 1 Springbrook Road, is over 1,000 feet. It's really on the other side for us, and will be any of these, will be the closest, that's over 500 feet, and there's an elevation difference, so they're going to have a hard time really seeing it from that outside, just depends on, you know, where you put the sign on the other side. So it's really just these three areas, again, limited over here to some extent, possibly down here, but that, you know, is going to have some issues.
Frank, can you point out the DPW where that would be?
Right here.
That's that one, that's what I thought.
That's one right there.
Yeah.
And you see how it, you know, comes in and gets a little bit larger over there, and then this is all the R-15.
Okay.
You know, zone, you know, and Elm Street goes up there with all the residencies past it.
Yeah.
So it's really here, here, and here, possibly down there, but it's going to be tough.
And we would not allow, this would not allow one, because we do have some light limited industrial up on Route 1, or that's already allowable?
No, because within it, you have to either abut 95.
Okay.
Or be with, your property line has to be within 250 feet of 95. So something over here couldn't do it, and, you know, anything more than 250 feet, you know, a property more than 250 feet away wouldn't be able to do it under this bylaw, and also, the further you get away, the less, less impact it's going to have, and less likely you're going to be able to do it. I'm sorry, Stephanie, were you able to see it?
Yep.
I have a second question. So, you know, now having seen the map, it's not as pressing a question, but still, are we going to, well, there's a third question, but are we going to limit the number of signs that could be put up?
Good question.
In those areas, too? I mean, and I guess to piggyback Barney off of that question, would all signs have to be approved through you, slash, and/or us?
Let me answer the second question first. The Board of Appeals has responsibility for considering approving and denying special sign permits for billboards. So it would be our responsibility, if this bylaw were to be in effect, it would be our responsibility to, to consider applications. As far as numbers, I did not draft this to, to limit the numbers, you know, again, however, an electronic billboard, and I would think that anybody who wants to put a billboard up along the 95 would want to put an electronic billboard, they cannot be within a 1,000-foot radius of one another. Just a wild guess, I don't think we could get more than, more than three in that area that Frank has pointed out.
I just had a little trouble hearing you, Barney. Did you say none can be within 1,000 feet of each other?
Yes, correct.
Radius.
Oh, 1,000-foot radius.
Radius, thank you.
Of one another.
If I could just interject, I do think the, that when you add in the state regulations, there's far less opportunity for signs than you may imagine. I don't know that the, and the zoning board, of course, has the decision on each one of the individual applicants, the overall bearing that it has on the town, whether or not it's a good location or not. As far as limiting overall, I don't, that may involve other legal considerations that I don't know that you would actually draft that per se in a bylaw, say, we're not going to have more than two on 95. I don't, I haven't seen that type of language before.
Yeah, and I'm not sure about the three number, because again, you have all this land down here, and then that's that a little bit down there. Down here, it's more limited.
That would be more beneficial to one person than other.
I'm sorry, okay, I understand that. Say that again?
I was saying, that would like, set it up where people were applying, and it'd be kind of like, the first ones got it, the other ones didn't, that type of thing.
And Frank, are you saying you think it could be more or less, or you don't know?
I don't know. I don't think it would be less than three. I think it could be more.
Okay.
You know, I just, I would want to figure out how long this is, and then you could just go, you know. Now, for example, if a sign went here, the distance, again, approximately is about 500 feet across, so nothing could go right across from it, and then, you know, the radius goes another, you know, 500, so within 1,000, nothing can go in, but something else could go here, 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 it just depends.
And did Sharon, did Sharon pick one up, too? I think I see a billboard now on 95. Did they make a change, too, like we're doing?
Sharon has two up, and as Attorney Burr indicated, what they really did is they took their old bylaw, which is under their, I'm assuming is under their zoning, and allowed for a number of variances.
Okay.
So an individual went in there, negotiated with the town to, in order to do a mitigation package in order to get the variances.
Okay.
You know.
Does that answer all your questions, Doc, or do you have another?
Well, I guess a one-off, no, because, can we limit the number of signs? Potentially, either just saying to the zoning board, yeah, we don't want more than three, or should it be in the bylaw in that area? Are we, what, no, my thought is aesthetics. I mean, I don't have a problem with signs at all. I don't want to see five in a row, you know, how much is that a safety hazard on top of, you know, granted, a lot of times it's bumping up the traffic there, but.
Well, and to put it in perspective, it's three football fields and a little bit more, right? Thousand feet, you know what I mean? Sounds like a lot, but, you know, and so.
Oh, wait a minute, but I'd be curious of Barney's answer to that. Can we limit it?
I think I, I would take the same position as Mr. Burr. I'd be, at this point, reluctant to say yes. I'd probably want to do more research to see if, if something of that nature would be legally appropriate.
I think when we did the original bylaw, Barney didn't, we looked, you know, we did the radi, radii.
Radii.
Along one to identify what we estimated would be potentially the maximum number, but we didn't have a maximum number in there, but based on using the radius for the calculation. So I wonder if we could just did the same thing with these areas, that we could just be able to give what would be a ballpark figure of, you know, some real potential.
Yeah. I'm sure we could do that. As you remember, it was, it was initially a rough estimate that we did, and then Bill Kispere did something a little bit more technical.
Yeah.
You know, I could probably sit down with our new building commissioner, with Scott Shippey, and, you know, work with him on it and get a, get a census to that. Mark, are you inclined, if it's appropriate, to, to limit the number?
I mean, that's my thought. I mean, I think three seems reasonable to me, but I'd hate to see six.
Seth, Seth, just for those on Zoom, I know it's hard to follow in the room, has a question.
So just to Lorraine's point, like, if you had a really good ruler, you could do, you could figure out exactly what the maximum was by spacing out, the radius is, radii.
Radii.
And then you, by, the math says you only have room. If you start at the very end and you finish as far as you can go, you can only have four. So that math is ready to be done, if somebody's good at math, right? So there's a, there's a number that's built into this, and maybe it's higher or lower than you're thinking about, Mark, but you can figure that out for sure.
Like, for example, on the highway department side, only one could go over there.
Yeah, right.
Only one could absolutely go in there, just because of the width of the zone there.
And that affects across the street as well.
It affects across the street to some extent, too, yes. You know, but probably the easiest way to do it, to try to get the maximum, I would think, is almost assume there's not one there and just go right down, and that would probably max you out. When we did the Route 1 view, and I did it for a client, we looked at how it could go one after another, but also, when you looked at it, you said, you know, there's not going to be a billboard there.
Yeah.
Because of the upcrop of some ledge that was there. They were just saying, it's never going to happen there.
So there's like a theoretical and a realistic number.
Right.
Yep.
Right, you know, I mean, one of the problems you're going to have right here is access. The reason none of this area has ever really been developed is it really has no access to that backland. And that's a big area of commercial land. Now, there's also part of a butterfly habitat, I think, in there that could eventually.
Those are not Oak Street, those butterflies.
You know, and there's some wetlands down in this area, but, you know, I don't know, they might have to, you know, maybe somebody will be able to get access back there.
And obviously, conservation would have to weigh in, too, Barney and Lorraine, that, you know, a billboard couldn't go in the middle of, okay.
Seth, I think you kind of answered my question, Frank, so not, just wondering, like, can any of that, it's not developed now, but could, could it be developed? Say, say a billboard goes up and somebody did come in and develop something, would that be the, just shit luck of who put the billboard up, it might have to come down? Like, you know what I mean? If it was.
Well, no, you could have a development and a billboard. You know, you see that on Route 1.
Go around it.
Yeah.
Sort of grandfathered in at that point, wouldn't they?
Well, that's, well, that's what I was wondering, because, because we're saying it can't be 300 feet, and, you know, so, same thing, I don't, kind of, like Doc said, you know, I'm okay with the billboards, you know what I mean? I do, you know, I just, just asking questions so that we don't run into trouble later, and I don't know the area that well, that's why I was just like, like, wondering, I'm like, okay, well, it's undeveloped now, but could it be developed? And then I guess we just have to rely on when they go before Barney and his crew, that you guys will sort that out, where they can be and, and everything. Okay?
And Barney and Lorraine, your board supports this bylaw if we were to put it forward as it's, as it's written as well, obviously?
The position that we took was to recommend that, that you consider.
Okay.
I'm somewhat reluctant to say that we, we should be taking a public position on this, because if the bylaw ultimately goes to town meeting and is approved by town meeting, obviously, we're going to be the ones who are going to consider the applications. So I am a little bit reluctant to have us take a public advocacy position at this point in time.
And there was a little sliver there, is that highway, what's that, we're intentionally leaving out that highway business zone, because it's just the on-ramp?
Are you talking about this?
And down, and down a little bit, yep.
Yep. Well, this is on the off-ramp, so, or on-ramp.
And then the other one has a corner too.
But this is not the zone.
Okay.
This is the only zone that...
Right. So, this is why I'm asking, we intentionally left highway business out, even though it does abut kind of in two places, the on-ramp and then the highway.
I don't want to say I intentionally left it out. I intentionally limited this to the limited industrial district.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you. All right. Any other questions from the board, or? All right, so...
I'm just curious, so, what's the benefit of, like, best interest of the town, as mentioned, why do we sponsor this? What is the...
Rather than it going as a citizen's petition?
Yes. That's the question, why do we want to sponsor this?
I mean, I think, for me, the DPW piece, and we could get a billboard potentially on there for the town, for revenue, makes it worth it.
We could do that anyway, without this.
Could we?
No, because you couldn't, you wouldn't have a zone to do it.
Yeah, we don't, we would need to create this.
Well, we could do that separately, is what I'm saying. We could create it separately from this piece of it. So, this piece is what I'm questioning, why, I mean, I'm not saying it's, I have a problem with it, per se, but if I'm sponsoring something, I want to understand why I'm sponsoring it. In the best interest.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but we have a little bit more control over how it's worded. I mean, it's worded...
Well, we have control over it right now, where we just let the, let it go by a citizen's petition, and I just, I'm looking for the value of us sponsoring it. And so, you're saying, I see what you're pointing, Doc.
Versus citizen's input, which we've had a couple of times in the past, and...
Right. I mean, I would suggest that the entire board was against it, that it would struggle to pass through at town meeting. Not, again, not that I'm suggesting we are doing that, I'm just looking for the value of it, and...
Well, right now, what we're requesting is that you allow it to go on.
Yeah.
And then you can either support or not support it in the future. One of the benefits, again, of allowing it to go on is before the final closure of the warrant, which can reopen and close it, we may be able to tweak the language if we all agree to it. Once we give you the citizen's petition, you can't change the language. The one thing that we do ask is, you know, any changes that we have the ability to agree to, because otherwise, we could have just put the citizen's petition. And the only difference between our citizen's petition and what you received is we put the 300 feet in there that you had, was blank. We had a lot of discussion on that distance, and not wanting to speak for the board, but they felt that they wanted to bring it forward to you to get your opinion on it also. But I've spoken with the DPW director, and, you know, 300 feet is, you know, what he thinks, you know, he's going to need, you know, to keep it away from residents, but also to get a sign on there. For example, if you put it to 500 feet, for example, I'm not sure you can get a sign on there.
Mm-hmm.
We could still have a sign on the Rounds property, but I'm not sure the highway department would be able to get it and meet all the requirements for the state to put a billboard there. So, we thought 300 was a good number, you know, to keep it away from residents. And again, we spoke about whether we wanted to do a residential unit or residential line, and eventually it was decided, you know, residential unit would be the best way to measure it.
So...
So, I, if I could...
Go ahead, Barney.
If I could just add to what, you know, Frank was saying, there are single-family homes on Elm Street that are in the limited industrial district. So, that was a major concern as the same unit, residential unit, as opposed to district. When I initially drafted this bylaw, Lorraine said to me, what are you thinking as far as the distance? And she said, are you thinking 1,000 feet? And I said, well, 1,000 feet would be ideal, but we would never be able to get a billboard on the DPW property. And echoing what Frank just said, I don't feel we could do it with 500 feet. So, I think 300 feet is reasonable, but I think it's also appropriate to measure the distance to a residential unit as opposed to a residential district.
And at 1,000 feet, you couldn't get a billboard up in the town of Foxborough, because of the residential across 95.
Yeah, so, for me sponsoring it, I mean, it's, you know, again, just looking at things in town that maybe need dusting off, keeping up with the times, clarification, I like the control that the board has. Again, we're just four people, you know, we asked to move it forward, but the town will decide if it's something they like or not. So, tonight, wouldn't be to take our position on it, we'll do that later on all the Board of Selectmen sponsored articles, but this would just be, do we want to put it on the warrant, as we work towards closing the warrant?
Right. And so, I'm asking, and I don't know that I got a very good answer, maybe Lorraine or Barney, because I think you both live in town. So, the people at town meeting are going to ask, why do we want billboards in town on the highway? Like, that's the question that's going to be asked, and that's how they're going to have that in mind when they're voting, so...
So, I think, I mentioned we had discussions with Bill about the DPW. There's, you know, some significant financial benefits to the construction of the sign, you know, to coming, going into an agreement to have that type of sign. But in addition, there, you know, through mitigation, that benefit continues annually. And understanding that there are some significant capital needs related to the DPW building, it looked like it would be really beneficial financially to consider putting this on.
So, the mitigation aspect, is that for all the signs?
Yes.
For billboards.
Mitigation is compensation, right?
Yep.
Oh, okay.
So, even if, like, even if a private person put one up on their lot, we would still get a piece through the mitigation agreement.
That's what I needed to hear. Thank you.
It's a revenue, it's a revenue generator.
When we talk about DPW property, is, they have another piece of property?
It's Elm Street Garage.
Okay. So, if you put a billboard there, wouldn't it be like the people who live on Central Street?
Central Elm? I mean, it could, I don't, people could, I guess, see it from, you know, on the island.
They'd have to keep it 300 feet away from the closest residential unit.
All right. Well, I mean, I kind of think about that. Like I said, that's a football field. So, I mean, if you were in one end zone, would you want your house in one end zone and a billboard in the other end zone?
And does it have to be positioned so that, like, you know, like, a changing billboard isn't facing a house, it would obviously be facing the highway, correct?
Right.
Yes.
That's true?
Yep. The technology is such nowadays that there is no shed of light from the billboard onto the adjoining properties.
What does the back of a billboard look like? That faces in, you know?
Well, it depends. Some of these are two-faced billboards, so you'd have billboard on one side, billboard on another side. Or it would be straight metal if it was a single-faced billboard.
Because I don't think we'd want a billboard to be facing in, you know, at the residence. I think that would be, like, my gut, you know?
I do agree with what Mr. Keegan said, that the technology, this is, it's come a long way. It's no longer like the floodlights you see in a parking lot whereby living next to that could be much more of a hardship. While I have the microphone for one minute, I will say that the, that I do agree that the opportunity exists for the DPW. There are mitigation packages that are negotiated with the sign operator with each one of the towns for each one of the signs. And billboards are popular right now, and they are going up and down on I-95, but we live in a world of, a lot of, what is the, just slipped my mind, but...
Diminishing returns.
Diminishing returns, thank you.
Wow.
So, if you have other towns, love diminishing returns. If you have other towns that are actually putting these up and putting up a number of them, then the market starts to go down, and the mitigation packages are not as attractive. In Foxborough, I also found unique, is you already have billboards, and I think you have a great billboard bylaw. So, it's not a completely new concept here either.
It would just take them from Route 1 out. And, you know, we had to look at a mitigation agreement within the last nine months. And when we were benchmarking, like, we had no, I mean, besides me going to Google, you know, we had, we didn't have much to benchmark against, for what...
There is a significant difference in value, though, having a billboard on I-95 versus Route 1. And I think that's the attractive piece about that, in that I share the same concerns that you do, Stephanie, with regard to the shedding of light and impact on the neighborhood, but I've been persuaded, by looking at the technology, that the technology is actually shielded from anybody around it. So, if you're actually looking at it from the angle, you'll, all you'll see is a black face. You won't even actually see the lighting. The lighting actually protrudes out onto the highway itself, not onto the surrounding property.
Yeah. Well, and, like I said, I guess, all of a sudden, I thought of that, and I'm like, when everyone's saying DPW, I'm like, DPW, I'm like, okay, if one went up there, you know, it's right onto Central. I mean, not even just coming in, but I guess maybe, maybe they're high enough that, you know, it's not like it's, you know, 30 feet up, and it's shining right on, you know?
That's right.
Because if it was in that area, it's got to be seen by the highway. I'm trying to, in my head, picture how close, you know, how close it is there. But, you know something? I mean, if the kickback comes from the people who live in that area, that, you know, at town meeting, so be it, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
I guess, that's why it'll be voted on there, so...
Yeah, the other thing...
I agree with the concept, absolutely.
Ultimately, if the bylaw is approved, these are all issues that the zoning board would need to consider when it's considering an application. And obviously, because all the meetings are public hearings, we would certainly take into account considerations of residents in those areas.
True.
You know, if I may just add one thing, in addition to what, you know, Lorraine was talking about, when we were first considering the signed bylaw back in 2014, the issue of billboards along the interstates just never came up. We already had billboards on Route 1, and as a consequence, we just limited billboards to Route 1. The topic, the subject, the issue, nobody ever raised it, it was never a point of discussion. So, we have a signed bylaw that was approved in 2014, and here we are several years later, and for the first time, somebody is raising that, raising this as an issue.
Yeah, and you could even, like, go pull it under the, you know, Star Petroleum, and because we put a billboard up there for Shop Local, you know, so I sat under it, and, you know, you can kind of go check it out. But I think I'm, I think, I think we could probably take a motion to move this forward. Obviously, we'll take a position, town meeting will decide, and then if it does, you know, go forward, there's also the Zoning Board of Appeals, you know...
Yeah. Well, the thought that, you know, I mean, it would be a shame that we pass the bylaw, and then we can't even benefit.
Right.
Because we have a piece of property, but if that were the case, and they would go to the meeting there, and then you would, you would hear their point, and you would make a decision, so, okay.
Yes.
Motion for the Board of Selectmen to sponsor an article.
Did you have something?
Well, when you make the motion, could you make it to include the 300 feet under Item 5, since the bylaw that you received had that blank?
The one we have has it, it has it.
We have.
Yeah, it has 300 feet, yep.
It was included, yeah, it was included.
Oh, okay.
Motion for the Board of Selectmen to sponsor an article for the 2022 Annual Town Meeting to amend the zoning bylaws in regards to billboards to coordination with the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
All right. Thank you, thank you, Barney and Lorraine, for your work on helping us get this drafted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, can we have Rob, because I may move to Rob next, if he's hanging on, waiting for us?
Yeah.
All right, so I am going to go out of order, just because we have Rob Verdon on from Semerick, and he was due at 8:00, so we'll go to him, and then we'll go back to our updates, if that's okay with everyone.
Yep, just he's coming on right now.
You're the only one right on time tonight, Rob.
Do you hear me okay?
Yeah, can you just turn it up a little bit, Mr. Beck? Thank you. All right, I think we're ready.
Awesome. I'm just going to share my screen.
We can see it, yep.
All right, great. Well, thanks for having me. It's, I know it's been a little bit since I joined one of your meetings, but I really appreciate it, and I always enjoy coming to see the Foxborough Select Board and the Selectmen. So, some updates from Semerick and what our past year looked like. Obviously, we moved into our new facility up at High Rock in Foxborough, and we were fortunate enough to have the Lieutenant Governor come and join us for a tour, along with some of the Select Board and Board of Selectmen members, as well as Secretary Reedy and under secretaries from EOPS. That was a great experience to speak with the Lieutenant Governor about this operation, 911 in general, and how the industry has changed over the years, and how we're kind of staying on the bleeding edge of that. So, last year, calendar year '21 in review, we were quite busy. We did about 58,000 911 calls, about 100,000 CAD entries, so actual calls for service in our CAD. 86,000 of those were police, and 15,000 were fire, and that's across all four of our communities. On the bottom, you can see our timeline across the year. That spike is that nor'easter we had at the end of October, generated about a week's worth of 911 calls in a period of four hours, which we handled with, I wouldn't say ease, but we handled it just fine. It was certainly an operational surge that was handled within our system, and got to see our plans go to work there. As far as 911 calls, this is what the map looked like from the past year. You could see, you know, obviously, concentrating within the towns. We also took a tremendous amount of calls out of Brockton, just because of the way the towers are situated. So, that was a unique challenge that we undertook this year. Our average ring time, so, from the second a call actually rings in to someone answering it at our center, averaged around three seconds. The national standard's 10. This is a little bit more highlighted perspective of where the calls were actually concentrated. You could start to see the highways and the intersections really brighten up there, Route 1, around Child Stadium, and some other points of interest. Through this analytics program that we've started to use, we're actually starting to help our partner agencies, and this is a view of just some of the data analytics we did for other recs and other PSAs across the Commonwealth. So, we're able to, you know, fill in the gaps where other agencies can't, they don't have the resources to do this. Some new technology we've deployed, or enhancements to technology, this is a program we use called Rapid SOS, and I'm pretty sure I've spoken about this before, but this program allows us to take 911 data, plus the tremendous strength and technology that's found in smartphones like iPhones and Android devices, and pull that data into our system and map it. So, this is a layer on top of our 911 system, and it gives us hyper-local and very precise location data. What we've added recently was the ability to pull in additional data from a cell phone. Like, if you have a medical alert or a medical profile in your phone, we're able, we're able to ingest that now. Just by you calling 911, it pops up on our screens. This is a sample call, where you could see someone has, well, it's all our test data, but date of birth, gender, home addresses, pre-existing medical conditions, allergies, all those medical alert-type data points are actually just natively pulled into our system if they're in your phone. Additionally, we're pulling in latitude and longitude, radiuses, starting to get z-axis, where it's height above the ground, so we could start determining what floor people are on, and a new technology called What Three Words, where a 10-by-10-foot block on the earth is correlated to three words. So, if we're communicating with the police or fire departments, instead of giving them the latitude and longitude, we can give them the three words, they can put it into their phone, and it'll map it just the same.
Rob, how do people put that info into their phone to feed to you guys? Do you know?
So, it's a couple different ways, and I have a slide a little later on that shows how to actually put a full profile on there. But this will actually pull in, if your phone has the emergency data just programmed right into the, on iPhone, into the emergency contact form. But if that's something that, if you need more than that, or I strongly recommend building out an emergency profile, which I'll show in just a few seconds.
Okay, sorry to jump ahead of you.
No, no worries at all. Another feature that we're actually baiting, we're one of the first agencies in the country to have this, is the ability to ingest alarm data right into this portal. So, if a alarm company, which would traditionally call us on the phone and say, hey, there's a burglar alarm at, you know, 123 Main Street, instead of them actually calling us now, they're able to publish it as soon as they get it, and it'll pop up on our screens, and we can see the, all the same data they see. and we're able to either accept it, or if we don't accept it within thirty seconds, they call us anyway. Uh, but this really cuts down minutes for our, our alarms. It gives us all the same data that the, uh, alarm agent would have. Um, additionally, we could chat back and forth with them, so if we need a key holder to respond, or a property owner, uh, we could just shoot them a text through this portal and say, hey, can you have someone, uh, respond down to us? Or is anyone responding now? So if you go to our website, semerit.gov, um, up top, there's, uh, Emergency Registrations tab. If you click Register a Profile, it'll bring you to this page where you can sign up for free, register all this data. If your phone that's associated with that, uh, profile calls us or calls nine-one-one, it'll pop up on the screen, and we'll have all that data. We're also, uh, ingesting data from Uber and Lyft, so if you're in an Uber ride or a Lyft ride that's associated with your cell phone, you call nine-one-one, we're able to, most of the time, see the, the right information, the driver's location, I'm sorry, the driver's information, uh, the driver's license plate, and your route. Uh, another program we're implementing now is called Pulse Point. So Pulse Point is a program where, um, members of the community can register their automatic external defibrillators, or AEDs. Um, it's kind of a give-and-take, so what the portal does is allow you to track, um, pad expiration dates, battery life. Um, you can take a picture of it. The other, what it provides us is the location of the AED, um, if it's publicly available, if it's locked up at night. Um, and what we're able to do from there is, in our protocol set, if we come to a cardiac arrest, we can ingest that, uh, address and the location of the caller, and instead of saying, is there an AED available, now we can say, if there's a registered device, there is an AED at this school, it's in the front lobby, can you get it? Um, so it takes that from, that, um, that task from saying, hey, you in a crisis situation, do you know what an AED is, and do you know where one is, to, hey, there's an AED over there, go grab it and bring it back, and I'll tell you how to use it. So for this to actually work well, we need the community's participation, so if you have an AED, uh, I encourage you to go to our website again, uh, semerit.gov, same thing, Emergency Registrations. If you register the AED, it's a pretty simple process. You put in your, uh, location, business address. There's also an app that you can download to take pictures and do all this registration. Uh, once it's in there, it's available to us to approve or reject, or ask questions about. Um, and again, this is all free, and it really helps to, you know, bridge the gap between AEDs out in the public and us telling people where, uh, an AED is when it matters the most. Another new tool we're deploying is called Prepared Live, and we're, again, we're the first in the Commonwealth to have this, and one of the first in the nation to have this. What this tool does is allows us to initiate a text message to a cell phone. Um, so if we have a caller who's on nine-one-one and they can't talk, and they can't necessarily manipulate their phone, we can text them. Um, if we're talking with a third party, like a mental health counselor about a patient, and we don't have contact with that patient, we can simultaneously text that person. If someone is with us and they want to submit something like a picture or a video, um, they can do that. We can shoot them a text, they can reply to the text just like they would a normal, um, message. Or we can elicit more data or provide pre-arrival instructions, so this is a very valuable tool. Um, the most impressive thing is that we could actually send you a link, and you can livestream what you're looking at, um, to give us some data to better advise responders of what the actual situations, uh, appears to be. Little bit of a COVID update and an update to our systems here. Uh, we've re, uh, we've gone from a surveillance mode to a, a trigger mode. Um, so certain calls will trigger, uh, pre-arrival instructions specifically tailored to COVID. Um, we call this our emerging infectious disease screening tool. So, um, this allows us to do some cursory screening of, of a person's potential for being affected with COVID or infectious diseases, provide them with pre-arrival instructions to protect them and protect responders, and it also gives us a tremendous amount of data. So we've always had this in a surveillance mode before it was tailored specifically to COVID. It was more generally based off of infectious diseases and that emerging infectious disease. That's why it's called an EADS tool. And just to kind of brag a little bit, we've, like I said, we've always used this. This is our data since April two thousand twenty. Uh, the blue bars are our hits or, you know, qualification that this is indicative of an infection. Uh, and you could see that, you know, we had a spike, and then the green line is the state's testing positive testing data related to COVID. So we were months out before the state was actually, uh, capturing data related to COVID as far as testing data, and then you could see that our data really parallels the state's data. So that, that program really proved fruitful. Um, we didn't really realize how fruitful it was, but, uh, looking back, um, I think there's really a potential to use these tools to, to better forecast and predict when we're starting to see these spikes and, uh, recurring outbreaks. Uh, just to look back, um, I think four years ago now, this is a slide I pulled out of a presentation prior to us going live, um, talking about how regionalization nine-one-one works, the benefits, and obviously the, the money part. So back then, we were, um, all four communities were, um, collectively, uh, eligible for a hundred ninety thousand dollars in grant revenue. And back then, we said that as a regional center, those four, same four towns were eligible for eight hundred ninety thousand dollars collectively. Um, fast forward to two thousand twenty-two, that number has turned into one point three million dollars in, in annual grant revenue from the same program. Um, so it, I know it was a question back when we were in that, um, development phase about the longevity of the grants and what happens when they dry up, and the state's appetite to support these in the long term. Um, these grants are protected by law, as I said before, but, uh, just that almost doubling in grant revenue over the past four years is really, uh, encouraging and indicative of the state's support of these programs. Additionally, our projected forecast for annual assessments was five hundred eighty thousand dollars annually, uh, this year and last year, and hopefully next year. Our anticipated, anticipated assessments to the communities is three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, so again, we've, uh, I just wanted to revisit what we forecast and, and where we are today. Uh, we're hopeful and anticipating and really pushing to keep those, uh, assessments down in that, in that, uh, range. So look forward into two thousand twenty-three, FY two thousand twenty-three, which is, uh, calendar year twenty-two and twenty-three. Um, one of our biggest hurdles right now and struggles is our current computer-driven dispatch records management system. Um, when we deployed them, they really were kind of state-of-the-industry. Um, over the past four years, the industry has matured rapidly, uh, especially with just how technology in general and, and consumer use has, uh, developed very rapidly. That is starting to, to really correlate into rapid development in, in this space as well. Um, the demand from new consumer technologies is very impactful on our operation, and, um, it's really time for us to, to modernize our, uh, infrastructure, and that includes the community's infrastructure as well. This year, we're implementing a regional analytics and infosharing program. Uh, we're in the midst of a radio system, uh, replacement. Foxborough is underway right now. Uh, the, the Semerit Board of Directors is now working through, uh, an IMA modernization proposal. Uh, we are currently deploying a, uh, credentialed, uh, emergency fire dispatch program, which I'll talk about in a little bit. Uh, we're coming to the end of our ACE accreditation and CLIA accreditation, which are two accreditation programs, uh, which, um, weigh our policies and procedures and our performance against accreditation standards, and either certify us or, or don't. Um, we're performing very well, and we're very close to achieving those, and we're working closely with Foxborough Fire for their CIPSE accreditation as a, uh, accredited fire department, as well as Foxborough Police Department with their, uh, NPAC accreditation program. And we're, uh, talking with several communities about, uh, potentially joining the Semerit District in, uh, Semerit as an operation. To just touch on emergency fire dispatch, the question I get a lot is, don't you do that already? And the answer is yes. Um, when we talk about emergency fire dispatch as, as a program though, um, it is a new certification. Um, it's very similar to our emergency medical dispatch program, um, where it is an international standard that's, uh, based off data and peer-reviewed research that, um, drives how protocols developed and what pre-arrival instructions are authorized and how they're given. Um, so it's a certification and, uh, training program that has, uh, continuing education requirements year to year and quality assurance requirements that are very structured. Um, the quality assurance program is peer-reviewed and third-party reviewed by the International Academies of Emergency Dispatch to make sure that we're doing our QA, QI correctly and in accordance with their policies. Um, and it gives us an additional set of tools to help someone who's in danger, um, and giving more advanced pre-arrival instructions, like, uh, indicated here, how to escape a house fire, versus telling someone now to get out of your house. If someone says I'm trapped, this now gives us the tool to work through, um, their individual risk and to give them pre-arrival instructions that are standardized, peer-reviewed, and researched, so that if something doesn't work out well, um, we have some liability shilling, but they're all designed to help that person really, um, navigate that threat and get to safety. Uh, but it, it kind of breaks down that barrier of us hesitating to give pre-arrival instructions because of that risk. Um, it gives us an additional accreditation path, and it helps us collect data consistently um, and correlate what we're seeing as calls to risk and how we're responding to that and how they're mitigated. An update to our CAD RMS program, uh, our goal is to integrate next generation data, so we have a tremendous amount of data, as you saw. Uh, trying to get that into one system and integrating it all to make sure that we're using all that data to really drive our operation and respond, uh, in real time to emergencies. Um, these new softwares have, uh, advanced reporting and analytics capabilities that are, are done in real time, including computer learning, artificial intelligence, um, which allows us to take, you know, separate disparate incidents and find a single thread between them that correlates them and say, hey, um, X, Y, Z correlates, you might want to look into this, or, um, you just took three calls for a car accident that is very close to each other. You might want to, you know, deduplicate these and make sure they're not going to three different car accidents, um, which is a manual process right now. Uh, it gives us the ability to interoperate and share across multiple jurisdictions, uh, which we do now within the district, but this gives us the further opportunity to share and interoperate between different, uh, recs even, where if we needed an ambulance or a police officer from a Mediacomment, uh, community, if our two systems are linked, um, they could see all the data that we have already. They could see all the cautions, all the warnings, all the, uh, history of the, of a premise. Um, and it go, we could also see if they have units available. Um, these new systems give us advanced disaster recovery capabilities, so if a server fails, if we need to migrate very quickly into a cloud environment or off-site, uh, these new systems are designed to do that, and their, their architecture supports those, those moves very quickly. One of our biggest threats and challenges right now is maintaining cybersecurity. We spend a, a bunch of time and effort into maintaining our cybersecurity, um, and we're using antiquated legacy, and we're protecting legacy antiquated, uh, software, which is designed and, and engineered in a, a period of time where cybersecurity really wasn't a risk. Um, so we spend a tremendous amount of money and effort into protecting those with external services and software and, and devices. Update management, updates are our biggest kind of downtime. That's not, uh, a disaster. Uh, so to do an update to our software, which are becoming more frequently, uh, frequent due to cybersecurity issues, it could take periods of hours where we don't have our tools or have limited access to our tools. Um, with these new softwares, it's a close your window, open it back up, and your update's done, which allows us to keep operating and, uh, kind of not skip a beat. And, um, right now, our, our systems are kind of stopped where they are as far as integrating into new, uh, and newly developed emerging technologies versus new systems where they're built to, to, um, interact with, um, various APIs and, and new systems. So if we deploy, uh, let's say body cameras, right now our systems can't handle that. Or whatever the next technology is that we don't even know about, our systems today could not even contemplate doing that versus, uh, the next generation of CAD RMS system where they're designed to, um, be very agile in their interactions. Right now, we're, CAD RMS platforms are very, very, very expensive. Extraordinarily expensive. I, I think they put public safety on it and triple the price, and that's just the way it is. Um, many of the other centers around the Commonwealth have the same systems we have, and they're facing the same issues, and individually, it would be hard pressed to afford them. So we've been working collaboratively across the Commonwealth to develop a plan where we kind of go at this together. Um, and right now, we're postured, um, to work with the state to host, um, the multi-agency CAD RMS platform here with various disaster recovery, um, strategies. So Semerit would be the host and then potentially have different tenants from the other recs participate and share the price across those different platforms, making, um, the system that we can afford together a much more robust system than we couldn't afford, uh, individually. Uh, we're wrapping up a first iteration of what we're, our, our Intercom project, um, so, um, last year, the, the loss of T-Band was on the horizon, since that's been mitigated, but, um, traditionally, center-to-center communications would be done via phone or radio. Um, we said, hey, we have these new advanced radio systems or radio console systems, why don't we just develop an Intercom? Kind of use an old-school tactic to, um, mitigate a, a, a new world issue. Um, so we did that, and we linked up us in Duxbury, who's our backup center. We have an Intercom now with the Mediacommit Regional Center, which serves Norfolk, Franklin, Rentham, Plainville, and now two additional communities. Uh, we set up an Intercom with Stonehenge College, which is one of our, our colleges in, in our district. We're working right now on developing one with Holbrook, which is a neighboring, uh, regional center, and we do have one with, uh, State MEMA and FEMA, so we have any, um, statewide or national emergencies that can communicate that very easily. That also includes National Weather Services on that, that system as well. Uh, looking forward into kind of what communities we could potentially be engaging with. This is currently what the statewide regionalization effort looks like as far as communities that have regionalized. Um, you can see where the Purple Heart right in the middle of, um, Massachusetts, and there's a bunch of white, uh, un-regionalized PSFs around it, so there's a, a, uh, pretty wide market of communities that could potentially join Semerit. Um, we've, we've gotten requests way outside of that contiguous zone there, um, but we're the only game in, in Bristol County right now, and there's a tremendous amount of interest from around us as well. Kind of to zoom in a little bit there, you can see just how, uh, how many communities have not regionalized yet around us. Um, here's my, my plug. If you need help, if you think you need nine-one-one, please call nine-one-one. Do not hesitate. Uh, our staff is here to help. There's never a situation where we'd, uh, you know, tell you you did the wrong thing. Uh, we'd rather help you get the, the services you need that maybe aren't emergency services than miss one nine-one-one call. So if you have an emergency, you think you might have an emergency, please call us. Uh, and the number's nine-one-one. Uh, you could text us if you can't call us, but we always prefer a phone call. I think that's all I have. Uh, our website is semerit.gov. Uh, we are decommissioning the scmassnineone.org, and semerit.gov will be our main website, and we'll set up a redirect. And if you want to follow us on social media, they're all at semeritnineone. So that's all I have as far as updates. If you have to answer any questions.
Pretty, pretty cool stuff, and I, I like how the heat map is a heart. That's kind of, it's kind of neat. I never, I never really noticed that. And so we go to that website to put it in our profiles. That's definitely something maybe we push on social media, our social media, you know, how people can follow you. Um, it's, it's all really great and interesting, and it, it amazes me how far we've come in a few years. Anything else from the board?
So, Madam Chair, just, if I could just.
Amazing.
Amazing. Thank you so much, Rob.
Madam Chair.
Oh, sorry, yes.
No problem about that. So I just wanted to say, first of all, that it, it is amazing when you listen to what Rob said tonight, and think about how what dispatch used to be just three, four years ago.
Yeah.
I mean, we, we're light years away from what we were three, four years, and not only that, but we saved, saved at least, at least about, almost close to three million dollars a year. Uh, well, not three, three million dollars in total, about six hundred thousand dollars a year just in what it costs, used to cost us to run the, runs, run dispatch. Um, we're, we're paying for that about three hundred thousand dollars a year now compared to nine hundred thousand. On top of that, add on to the top of that the cost of the infrastructure plan, the, the upgrades that we needed to do just to keep the, the, the plant running. Um, and that would have been another million dollars just to do that. So it's close to three million dollars in savings just to line that, so just, that's just the numbers. But to take a look at where the technology is, is extraordinary. I mean, the, the ability for them to actually do things um, in a digitized way and communicate in a way that, that is just, uh, and provides public safety in a response manner that is, it really leads the way and sort of sets the standard for, for public safety response. So, so Rob is a classic example. If you want to do a tough project, go hire a smart guy, and, and, and he, he sort of is the epitome of that, so I just want to say publicly, thanks, Rob, for everything you do. You do a great job for us, and we're very happy that you, with what the progress you've made up there.
Very impressive.
I appreciate the support over the years as well.
All right. Thanks a lot, Rob.
Absolutely.
Good night. All right, so with that, we'll go back to Assistant Town Managers' update, Town Managers' update, and then over back to our update.
Okay, I just want to, um, update you on five positions, um, that were, uh, five new hires. So in the Police Department, um, we hired, um, pull his name up here.
Scott Flaherty.
Scott Flaherty. Um, he's a lateral transfer, came from the Seco Police Department. He started on January ninth. Um, he's a, uh, Foxborough High School graduate, uh, has degrees. He's a Foxborough High School graduate, has degrees from Suffolk University in criminology and law. Also coming over to public safety is Alexander Noonan, he's a paramedic, joining our Fire Department, he started on January 10th, he's a Foxborough High School graduate, and he's a student in epidemiology, so we're glad to have those two joining us. Right around the corner, we have three more that will be joining, and that, these are also fairly local folks. Michael Pitts is formerly a DOT driver, he'll be taking, filling the full-time van driver position over at the Council on Aging and Human Services. He's starting with us February 7th, he's a Navy veteran, and he's coming to us from Osprey Incorporated Boston Truck and Van. And Marissa Cludier Bristol is coming to DPW to be a coordinator in the Water Division, and she'll be starting February 14th. And she comes to us with a varied experience, very similar, using same systems from the North Attleboro Fire Department as well as North Attleboro School Department. And finally, Kate Fenery is a licensed social worker, she's coming to fill the Community Case Worker position at the Council on Aging and Human Services, she'll be starting February 22nd, and she comes to us from, she's got experience over at the Midway Council on Aging, and most recently from the Jewish Family Services of Metro West. And she has degrees from Leslie University with a bachelor's in Human Services and a master's in counseling and psychology. So we're very happy to have them joining our town, filling not new positions but filling openings that we had. And that's all I have for you this evening, unless you have any questions for me.
And do we have a long-time retirement too, David Healy, right? Was that this week, or?
Yes, yesterday, actually.
Yeah.
Longtime firefighter, paramedic, captain with a master's degree, and, you know, he's given many years of service to the town, so we're congratulating him as his retirement. I know they did something for him over at the Public Safety Building yesterday at noon. And then the last thing is, you know, soon you'll be seeing coming up on the town website our summer recreation positions, you know, the whole assortment of positions, you'll see those seasonal positions coming open.
Great. And what about, have we even, unless I missed it, did we mention about Deb Giardino retiring and the filling of that position?
That hasn't happened officially yet.
I don't think that's happened. Oh. Well, the position's been filled, correct?
Yes, but the retirement hasn't occurred yet.
Oh, okay, all right, yeah, because I didn't even, I didn't even hear anything about the position being filled, but I know I got an email, rec email, introducing that she's, Renee's the new rec director and whatnot, so.
Yep, so Debbie Giardino is retiring in April, and right now, filling the position is.
Renee Tachi.
Renee.
Renee Tachi as the Recreation Division Director. So that's going to be a division position as opposed to a director position, with more information to come on that, you know, shortly.
Yeah, because you're doing a whole new.
The reorganization.
Yeah, so that went out though, that, because I get that, I'm on that email list too, so that did go out too, I got it as part of that, and yeah, so maybe we need to hear more about that at another meeting as well.
Yeah, I didn't want to send that out until we announced it at the power of the budget process that we were going to make that change, so, okay. Okay, so just a few items on my end, first of all, I just want to say, a big thank you goes out to Public Works for the work that they did during the storm, and to Public Safety for everything that they did as well, but certainly the work that Public Works did to work over a two-day period effectively to clean up the storm that would dump 20, almost two feet of snow on Foxborough, did a terrific job. We had very few, we didn't lose power at all, thank God, and we were able to get most of the streets open pretty readily, because there's some cleanup work still to be done. We have another storm lined up for the end of the week, for, it's going to be sort of a mixture of ice and rain, so maybe some snow as well, so the crew's out there trying to get as much done as possible. They're going to be doing some removal tonight, starting at 9:00 tonight on the Common in the downtown business area, to get that cleaned up so we can at least have more safer places to walk, et cetera, in the downtown area. So again, great thanks to Chris Gallagher and his team for the work that they did on that. Also wanted to just, on the ARPA funds issue, I don't know if I was able to communicate this at the last meeting, because this actually happened the day after, but we had great success from the federal government for changing the wording on the ARPA funds use at the local level so that we, we've got about $1.925 million that we're going to be receiving from the federal government that we can use, and based upon the change to the final rule and Treasury, we're able to use that money because we were able to claim a $10 million exemption right out of the gate for a loss of revenue. Foxborough, on paper, we lost about $4.9 million of revenue during the ARPA period, or the COVID period. And then on top of that, we're supposed to receive an additional $3.5 million over two years from the county. Now, that's where the, it gets a little more interesting, because in the change that was made to the federal regulations, they indicated that $10 million would go, a $10 million exemption would go to each recipient, community, or entity. And the key word there is entity, because Norfolk County as an entity is going to be, receive a $10 million exemption for all of the 28 communities that it serves. So if you're, only 25 of those communities will actually qualify for that because three of those communities are outside that number. But what it means is that 25 communities have to compete for that $10 million number. So in other words, if our, if we wanted to use $3.5 million, we would, our $3.5 million would go up against that $10 million compared to the other communities in the county that would also have that limitation as well. So it's going to be interesting to see how we figure that out, but I, we've already communicated that concern to the congressional delegation. I was actually pleased to see that, I heard from Senator Mackey today, who gave an update on that today, and specifically mentioned Foxborough in his comments, saying that he was appreciative of the work that we did to try and help him understand that concern. So it was, it's one of those things where we, it's unique because Foxborough is in Norfolk County, and there's only six active counties in the left of Massachusetts. And because the money was filtered through the county to back to the towns, we're stuck with this challenging limitation of $10 million. The other defunct counties in Massachusetts, places like Worcester and Suffolk County, et cetera, places like that are getting their money directly from the federal government into the communities directly, and so the $10 million exemption applies to them automatically. So we're being treated a little bit differently what the actual intent was, so, but there is an effort afoot to try and change that and try to get it straightened out so we'll have better flexibility on the use of the $3.5 million. That aside, we're also looking at ways in which we can use the $3.5 million in other ways, which have been identified in the actual federal legislation. So it's all very complicated, and it's something that we're tracking very closely, but I do think that we'll be getting close to the point where we can actually start identifying uses of the money. The good news is it's not, doesn't rub up against town meeting time, because we can use this money anytime we want over the next few years. So it's just a matter of having the Board of Selectmen would have to approve expenses once we identify what they are. But I think, and I had this conversation with Leah the other day, was that we probably need to identify some of those needs and start that formal process, and I, again, once I have better understanding of how that's going to go in terms of the $3.5 million use, we'll then move forward quickly about how we can address that. I do think that we can pay for some of the, some of our capital needs this year with the money that's coming to us directly, though, having said that.
Do we plan to involve agcom in that, too? I, like, watching other towns and following other agendas, it's definitely a lot of their finance committee, which I know ours isn't a finance committee, it's a little bit different.
Yeah, my answer to that would be yes. So it wouldn't be just, I think, I think the issue there is like, it's not what we want, it's not what I want, it's not what anybody else wants, it's just a case of what does the community want and how we want to spend the money. And I say that, but I'm only trying to point out that there are limitations as to what we can do with it.
Right, so what I had asked Bill is maybe, you know, instead of us giving him a list, I'd like to see his list and then us to kind of vet that, give you order in the process.
Yeah. And that list, I'm going to work with our departments to try and identify, and there are needs across the board that we want to try and address.
Real quick thing, I thought of it the other day, and you talked about in a prior meeting, Leah, being a little bit creative, and you mentioned the laundry building, what do we call it, that sort of a dangerous eyesore type of thing back there? Another thing that I thought of, and I'll just mention it quick, is the parking lot on Railroad Ave. So that is a new sort of municipal lot.
Yes and no.
But we don't own that, that's the challenge.
Okay, so.
We just have a use.
So basically, it is what it is at this point?
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, we wouldn't be able to put money into it unless we owned it.
Okay.
So they're letting us use it.
Right.
Laundry building is actually, was one of the issues that we had identified earlier, so that's right on, that's dead on.
Right, okay, so if we did on that, and, you know, that whole area is going to be for sale, I'm not saying that's going to be something that's purchased, but lights, fence, those types of things.
Right. So the other idea that's been circulated is the parking lot in the downtown as well, behind the buildings, and I think that's something that's a viable candidate.
Okay.
Though there is some ownership question marks about some of that land as well, because some of that may be privately owned, so we have to work through that process, it's, you know, it needs a little bit more work and understanding to how that we can make that work.
It's pretty underutilized, I would suggest, right? I mean.
It's, believe it or not, it's actually.
No, it's packed.
Really?
Yeah, it's packed.
Ever since the signs went up, as Jay Barrows said, indicated that to me this morning, Representative Barrows, that, he said, you know, ever since the signs went up, he says, everybody uses it now, so.
Okay, I was under the impression it was mostly like employees of the businesses.
No, it's actually getting quite a bit used.
And there's a lot of talk about like the dumpsters, there's a lot of different dumpsters in different places. I can't make it to Foxborough Common Business Collaborative tomorrow due to a work commitment, but I hope one of you two can, because they do want to talk about snow back there.
I'm planning on being there.
Yeah, we had a conversation, Jay and I had a conversation about, and Chris is aware of that, aware of the situation.
Yeah, I think it's been an ongoing thing, so that lot definitely needs some love, too.
Who owns the lot?
The town. But then there's some pieces.
But there are pieces, there are pieces that we don't own, that's.
I mean, the lot that Seth was talking about.
Schneider.
Oh, Schneider owns the lot, yeah, down at the railroad.
That's all for sale, the whole block, right, eventually?
No, not, they have not identified a use for that yet.
Okay.
They've not made a determination on that. I'm in constant conversation with them about that, and they made abundantly clear that they are not focused on that until they get finished with their other projects first. So it's a step-by-step process for that.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, that's all I have.
All right, I have a few things that have come in after the agenda, so first, we want to acknowledge the Annual Town Report Award, so we want to recognize Christina on our Annual Town Report for last year. So congratulations, and she's already well digging into this year, so on the way.
We're waiting on the award, too, we want to get, make sure we get the award.
Yeah, set the bar high now. So Bill already talked about the uptown snow removal and thanking, you know, DPW and everyone else. They will start towing cars in the Common in about 12 minutes, if your car's still up there for snow removal, sorry, 20 minutes. The Council on Aging has at-home COVID tests available for sale starting tomorrow, and that was posted online. And then, you know, timely, we heard from Reverend Bill Dudley for the Child Sexual Abuse Awareness Committee last week about the Darkness to Light Training, remember how we talked about when's that coming up? So everyone should have received an email, not only on this board, other boards, I know I got it through baseball, so, you know, making sure everyone is making it a priority to try to get to one of those, or, you know, the online version as well, so that was timely after we spoke to him. And then for old business, just the nomination papers are available right now to pull and return for our annual election. Anything else?
Yeah, I've gotten a little bit of feedback, Bill, from that South Street area where they put the red stone in for the two ways down Central Street and around Common.
Yep.
It ain't working.
Yeah, I, thank you, Doc, like, now we have red bricks that look like the pavement and not even a line.
Right.
So it's, I feel like, I expected it to be more than what it is now, I feel like it's almost, it's less prominent than at least when we had the line there before.
Yeah. I've seen people go from the inside lane down.
And now we're all used to, now we're all used to cars.
That's what was brought up, we got conditioned as Foxborough residents, so now all of a sudden, a car's cutting in front of you, it's going to have a bunch of close calls, back to DPW.
Yeah, you know, before we had this snow, I was almost thinking, remember those things that like are standing up, and if you run it over, it flops? Like, almost like we need something like that when we're not in snow season, I don't know what we do when we have snow, but I guess I thought the red bricks would be a little bit more prominent, and now they just kind of blend in with the pavement.
Okay.
Yeah, because, you know, Ed and I volunteered to be part of that discussion, and I, you know, I'm not going to say I told you so, but I didn't, I didn't see that working, but obviously, you know, Chris said, well, let's give that a try, it's less invasive, and I know he was worried about, you know, snow coming, and, you know, we had talked about maybe something portable, something that could go down, and then maybe if it had come up, if we knew we were getting a big snowstorm, because the last thing he wanted to do was make it difficult for the, you know, for the town guys to try to plow around, around something there, but, yeah, I've been cut off a couple of times already, and it's funny, I'm glad you mentioned it, Doc, because a couple of times it's been on my mind, maybe if I saw Kristus to mention it, but I just, I just figured we'd kind of go back, like, you know, and I don't think we want what was there, so like, you know, like with cones and big things, but, you know, maybe there was something that's a happy medium, you know?
Or at least, I know we can't paint now because it's too cold, but like, now we don't even have a line over it to show or delineate the lanes.
All right, we'll take a look at it.
So I think we got to look at that again.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doc.
Cool.
Anything else before we go to action items? All right, I think we're ready for action items, we've got four of them.
Motion to appoint James Houlihan to the Foxborough Commission on Disability for a term to end May 31st, 2024.
All those in favor?
All right. Motion to appoint Scott Shippey to the Survey Board, Town Asset Review Committee, and as a fence viewer with all terms to end May 31st, 2022.
All those in favor?
Motion to approve the January 4th, 2022 Board of Selectmen Meeting Minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Thanks, everyone, see you on the 15th.